Prior to tonight's meeting, we will have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the pledge of allegiance. God, in what may be our greatest time of need, please be with our government officials and their staff as they deal with the challenges of today. Give them wisdom on how to best represent everyone. Father, we also ask that you give your leaders courage so that even when it's hard, they continue to boldly represent their constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable in our city. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cresser, will you call the roll?
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
She must--
Twine is present. There she goes.
There she goes.
And Mr. Meiser?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes from our meeting of June 8th, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the June 8th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Once again, we are holding this city commission meeting electronically. Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk, and we will answer those questions that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to any other audience questions from the appropriate staff. I would also like to acknowledge that those of us in commission chambers are participating in this meeting and are doing so with appropriate social distancing and face masks when we get close to each other. Ms. Cresser, are there any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. So I had two different notes for our audience participation. The first is from James Snyder, the president of the Sandusky Firefighters Union, and it is regarding item E on the consent agenda. And it says, "With the passage of this item and the city of Sandusky being able to receive $500,000 that can be used for wages of firefighters, EMCs, paramedics battling the coronavirus pandemic, Sandusky Firefighters Local 327 respectfully request that our daily staffing of firefighters be raised back to 11 from the recent cut to 10 firefighters per day. We would also like to address a recent vacant firefighter position that has not yet been filled due to the retirement of firefighter Brad Wimmer. We feel that 10 firefighters as a daily minimum is a risk to our safety and to the safety of the citizens of Sandusky." The second email that I received for this evening was from Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. The first one is pertaining to item number three on the regular agenda. "In what way are the Mylander funds being appropriated? How much is the city receiving every year in a donation from the fund? And what restrictions are placed on the Mylander donations?" And the second question pertaining to item number four, "In regards to extending the Erie County Ray and Associates Audit Contract, why isn't the city bidding out the audit contract? The same firm has been performing the service for 10 years." And then I had one other that would be for audience participation at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Cresser. Those questions, we will address those questions as we get to the appropriate legislation. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, we have five items on the consent agenda this evening. Are there any of these items that any commissioners would like moved to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I think we need to move E. Isn't that the one we have a question on? Ms. Cresser, was that what we had a question on? Was that E?
We--
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Mr. Snyder from the Fire Department.
That's fine.
The question pertains to that. We, I would like, I would remind you, Commissioner Poole, that we can still have a discussion regarding this, leaving it on the consent agenda, or we can move it to the regular agenda, whatever your pleasure is.
If you leave it on the consent agenda, then it's an automatic vote. We didn't give any thought to it.
Okay.
So it, you know, and not that, and I mean, I changed the vote, but we have an obligation since it brought up to at least give the appearance that we're actually deliberating. So I think I'd prefer to just take it off for that, for those reasons.
We will, we will move consent agenda item E to number one on the regular agenda. Ms. Cresser, will you present the consent agenda items? Did we lose Ms. Cresser? There we go.
Yep. Want to make sure you can see it on the screen.
Yep, we see it.
Okay. So item A is a purchase and a sale agreement for one parcel through the land bank program. Item B is an annual submerged lands lease payment to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the Sandusky Sailing Club. Item C is a CDBG subrecipient agreement with OGO for the mobile food pantry and market. Item D is a CDBG subrecipient agreement with the Erie County Senior Center for the Meals on Wheels program, and item E was removed.
Commissioners, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Does that be Commissioner Twine?
Yes. I've moved to accept the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Cresser, you poll, we call the roll on the motion.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Perhaps Mr. Meiser--
This happens every week, man.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now on the ordinance and resolutions.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those ordinance and resolutions are passed. We'll turn our items, we'll turn our items on the regular agenda, beginning with item number one will now be formerly item number E on the consent agenda. Ms. Cresser, will you read item E now number one?
Yes. This is a resolution affirming that funds from the county coronavirus relief fund will be expended only to cover costs of the city of Sandusky, Ohio, consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 U.S.C. 801, formerly 42 U.S.C. 601, and any applicable regulations as necessary is necessary pursuant to House Bill 481 before receiving said funds, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move to adopt this resolution under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Since this letter was obviously sent before we got here, I'd like to hear probably from the, well, I suppose to start with the manager perhaps, on, you know, what, what the status is of this. I mean, he may have already taken some position. I would expect that they've identified how much it cost, and then perhaps from the fire chief, or whatever negotiations or discussions you've had to determine whether it's a good idea or not.
Mr. Whipser, do you have some comment on this? I know, in fairness to all of us, we received this communication middle of this afternoon, so many of you are seeing it for the very first time or hearing of it the very first time. Mr. Whipser, do you have, do you have some comment on it? And then I will ask if perhaps Ms. Reader would have a comment on it also.
Through the, through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, we recently became aware, I think at the end of last week, that this funding could be used for police and fire first responder wages, and we were very excited about that. That being said, the cuts that we're still facing are so dire that our plan for reduced savings, which includes reducing overtime for all of our departments, and includes planned attrition in, to some extent, in every department, we don't think that these funds will be enough to undo that at this time. We're not currently in negotiations with our fire union. It's a management issue, it's not a union contract issue, and therefore, we're continuing to work very closely with Chief Orzak, who should jump in if he has anything to add to this, Director Reader, our finance director, as well as Director Wilcox. But at least as of this time, it's too soon to tell whether any of the planned savings which have already been reported to the commission would be able to be undone. We've always anticipated some level of stimulus coming in. We're very fortunate that this funding can be used for police and fire wages, but as all of the commissioners know, we already have a great deal of police and fire wages. Approximately 50% or more of our general fund goes into our police and fire department's portion of the budget, and so therefore, we're holding it at this time. But please, either chief, feel free to jump in, or Director Reader.
Mr. Orzak or Ms. Reader, either of you have comments or, or comments to, to add to this legislation? We'd appreciate hearing them now if you have any.
Through you, Commission President, this is Michelle. The only things I would like to add from what Eric said is, you know, we're still not out of the woods yet on where we're going to be this year. We are very grateful for this $500,000 that we're going to get in local government funds that can be used for safety forces' wages. However, I would just like to remind everyone that our income tax receipts for June were still down $350,000 compared to where we were at, at the end of June in 2019. Our admissions tax was still down $400,000 compared to where we were at at the end of June, and lodging tax were down $140,000 compared to where we were at last June. So this $500,000 is, is going to help plug some of these deficits, but we still need to look at every expense and justify every expense that we have going out. So as the city manager said, you know, we're holding down overtime in every department, so that was our goal with reducing that manpower down to 10 at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. If there's no other comments, Commissioners, do you have any additional questions or comments? Commissioner Waddington?
No, Mr. Meiser.
Meiser.
Commissioner Meiser.
Yeah, this, this, this is, I didn't know this was coming out tonight, but I did read it, we're getting the budget, but I would like to hear Chief Orzak or Chief Wilcox speak to the safety issue. I understand the budgetary issues. Running 10 people, three fire stations is impossible to be safe, and it is not efficient for the citizens. I want to hear one of those two speak to this issue right now.
Chief, Chief Wilcox or Mr. Orzak?
Chief, this is Chief Wilcox here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, in terms of the, the position of, of safety for the firefighters, I've, I've been on record saying, you know, stating, you know, our, our staffing level is at a point where, you know, we, it's very difficult to keep the service up at the level that it's currently at, and also that, you know, it, it doesn't provide us a full staff at Station 7, per se. But in the spirit of trying to make sure that we can, you know, keep everyone intact, we had to make this move down from 11 to 10 with, with minimal consequences in opposed to what probably could have happened, was being scheduled, possibly with even more firefighters being cut and forcing us down to even lower numbers. So, I mean, in terms of safety, do the firefighters or the citizens have a hardship? And any, any hardship of reduction in manning in the fire service, especially for a service that runs?
Could I follow up, please?
Commissioner Meiser.
What, what is safer for the firefighters, to close a fire station or run a two-man engine?
This is where, sir, I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
What is safer for the firefighters, to run a two-man engine company or to close a fire station?
Well, right now, we, we're running, actually, we're running a two-man engine company out of Station 7. If we were removed, if we moved those people down to Station 1, we were concerned about the response time from that area for at least an ambulance arriving there first. 85% of runs are--
I can't hear it. Anybody hear that? Lost, lost his audio. I'm, I'm sorry, Chief Wilcox, I believe we've lost your audio entirely.
Him calling.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, you're back now.
Okay. So with us going down to two, two personnel at Station 7, that would at least give us, at the very least, an ambulance in that area to cover medical calls. With that being said, in terms of response or initial response for fire, that, that would be impossible, that would, and wouldn't be safe for initial arriving companies in that district. But the opposite to that, or the opposing thing to that, is that we move those people, those, those firefighters up to Station, Station 1, there would be a delay in response, and that was our concern initially, was the delay in response of any kind. So this was the lesser of the two evils.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions, future, more discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I'm sorry. Mr. Murray, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So we love our firefighters, we love what they do, we know they put themselves at risk, and we know this is a difficult time for everyone in our community, and everyone in our community is needing to make, needs to make adjustments, and we need to make, we need to make sacrifices. Yes, on occasion, and this is the very first time this year, I think it's important to know, on occasion, we do dip down to 10 firefighters. It's because of two things, Kelly days and vacation days that can be layered on top of each other to the point that we don't have enough firefighters if someone calls in sick. And at that point in time, we do drop down to 10. And so we, I'm certain as a city would have the capacity to not drop down to 10 if we had additional latitude from the firefighters in terms of the coordination of Kelly days and vacation days, or the use of part-time firefighters, which are used in every other community in our area, and a substantial majority of our officers take, of our firefighters take advantage of that. So, you know, I, I think that this is a relatively unusual occurrence. It only occurs in the summer. Here we are, the first day or second day of summer, and because of vacation time, if we were able to spread that out more, we wouldn't have that issue. So I think that means it's a very important part of this conversation.
Commissioners, positional discussion.
Mr. President.
Commissioner, that'd be Commissioner Meiser?
Yeah. Hey, I, I do respect Chief Wilcox's opinion, and, you know, I've got my opinion. I feel that as a community, if we cannot afford to keep our firefighters safe, we should close a station. We shouldn't bear the brunt on these young men. I know that you can say two in, two out, put all the OSHA and NFA standards in, but I know those young men are going to pull up, two of them, in front of a fire, and they're going in. One of them's going in, one of them's running the engine, and that one person going in alone into a fire is going to get injured or going to get killed. That's my concern. I'd rather, as a community, close a fire station than put the burden on the backs of those young men doing that job. That's just my opinion, and I know several chiefs after me had different opinions, so. And I don't disagree with everything that's been said, I just wanted to hear my voice heard.
Thank you, Commissioner Meiser. Additional questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I guess to, to the fire chief, Chief Wilcox, how long have we been doing, going with 10? I just, we just heard of this today, so how long has that been in effect?
It's been, to you, Commission President, we've been doing this for probably approximately two weeks.
Okay.
And so that's how long we've been doing it, approximately two weeks.
Okay, let me suggest that, okay. Mr. Murray, I respect your opinion on this, but two consecutive weeks is not just infrequently and as what you, what you described. It's Kelly days and vacation, I'm not sure that, that I'm completely on board that I think that's what, what the problem is. The question of closing a second station or a station, we've got two problems. One, we don't have enough firefighters to make them safe when they go to a call, and then if you close a station, we don't have enough coverage to protect the citizens. And so what's at issue here is we have a lot of $500,000, and it sounds like we're just understaffed in the fire department. I listened to the finance director, she talked about justification of what we spend our money on, those are all nice generalities. We haven't justified a thing that we've spent for the last six months. We've just spent it. And as nobody, long as nobody complained, we go, well, it must be justified. We're at the point in the equation, and I brought this up a month ago, where we have to set some priorities. So let me ask, in part of that, what was given, we had a, a retirement in the fire department. What's it cost, and this to the finance director, first of all, I guess to the chief, filling that position by itself, what does that do for us in terms of making it safer for firemen? And what's it going to cost to do that? That's my question.
Uh, and is that from, the first question, would you like Michelle to answer that first, or would--
It doesn't matter to me whichever, they, they come together toward making a decision about what we're going to do, we have to solve this problem, not kick it down the road.
Okay, so to you, Commission President, in terms of what a, a hire would do for, say, well, safety or staffing, it would most likely reduce the likelihood of having to call someone for overtime if we stayed at 10. However, we have a couple of members out on personal injury, one is work-related, one's not, that we have right now, all three shifts operating at 14 capacity in terms of members that are eligible to work or be off on vacation or Kelly, which leaves 10 every shift. If both holidays, I mean, if both vacation days and both Kelly days are utilized on those, on a daily basis, that would leave us at 10 currently. And, or if we had to bring it up to staffing level to 11, we would have to, we'd have an overtime day every day for those, or the days that we actually have four members off on Kelly days or vacations. And again, in, in terms of the firefighter's safety, I've already been, I'm on record as saying that I would, I would prefer to have us at 11 or, or better, of course, but at this time, you know, we are, we're, we were tasked with trying to budget and remedy a, more or less a very difficult time in our country's history and, and the state and our area, where we are dealing with budgetary issues that we never saw coming three months ago. And right now, in terms of staffing or deployment, in terms of the, the city as a whole, these are the difficult decisions that are made by, you know, chief officers such as myself and, and, you know, formerly where you have Chief Meiser, who also served in that capacity. These decisions are based off of what's best or the lesser of the evils, and I personally would prefer to have ambulance coverage in an area that would be totally out of district if we were moving personnel up to Station 1, and we won't meet neither, either the medical calls or fire calls in what I would believe a, a timely manner that the citizens in that district are accustomed to. So again, we, we have taken precautions to make sure that, to Commissioner Meiser's point about a firefighter going in, there wouldn't be a firefighter going in without significant or sufficient fire personnel arriving before there's any entry of any kind. You know, so in terms of that, that won't, that wouldn't happen. The second thing is, is that of the coverage for just two personnel for an engine company, I would have to, you know, have to say honestly, that it's not sufficient, sufficient, but there will, there is a delay of, you know, of other companies coming in, and we have to, we have to adjust accordingly, and we knew this was coming, and this is where we're at.
Okay.
Plain and simple.
All right, thank you. And I guess to be, keep it shorter for the finance director, what's the cost a month for another firefighter salary? What do we actually have to pay out in cash for another firefighter? Another, yes.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, what I have for a newly-hired firefighter, they're making about $1,657 a week, I'm sorry, a pay, which is bi-weekly. So for a month with benefits and everything else, I'm going to say you're about $5,000 a month.
Okay. We have $524,000 to deal with right here. COVID is not the reason we did away with that firefighter. It seems to me that since we're looking for this to get better over a couple of months, three months, we're going to be out $15,000. I can't imagine shorting the fire department, and I listened to chief, it was, it was very nice, he put it in nice terms, but we're not any better off having two firefighters pull up to a scene of a fire and watch the house burn down, waiting for somebody to come, just because we want to save five grand a month, just to see if maybe we need it, what else do you need it for, would be the question for the manager or whoever, or the rest of the commission. Now, if we were at normal staff and hadn't lost anybody, and we're making some adjustments or whatever because some people were sick, okay, maybe so, but we're down a firefighter and we need to, we need to replace that one first. And if you actually think that between now and the end of the year, we can't afford to replace what we had before, then we're in serious trouble. COVID didn't cause, that's not, that, we, we have to have basic safety for the community, and that's our first, our first priority, so I suggest that we fill that position, or if nothing else, manager, you folks need to come up with a better package that explains other than, we just kind of want to wait and see. Because the people that need the service provided by the fire department, they can't afford to wait, and we, and we have not, there's no case here that makes, for it to make any sense to not hire folks for five grand a month, when you got this kind of money, not to mention the number of employees that have come back and had positions, that are in positions since you laid off from the, from, from the beginning of COVID. From that layoff, we brought some folks back on board, and they weren't firefighters.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm done.
If I provided incorrect information, I apologize. That's the information I received from other staff members, and this was the first time it's been going on for two weeks. Well, I'd like to dive deeper into that. I'm, I'm sure the chief is right, but I'm, I'm getting some inconsistent information in that regard. But I want to point, I want to make another point that's a little bit broader. The $500,000 from the federal government is very much appreciated, but it is a small fraction of the deficit that we face. If we go through this with every-- If we go through this with every department, every single meeting that we have, we will not have solved our budget problem whatsoever. Every single department is going to take a cut. It's, as I've indicated, I continue to believe that it's going to be significantly more than we have cut to date, and I think we need to be responsible across the entire budget. The $500,000, like I said, is great, but it's not magic, and it doesn't solve the other problems. It might, in the best-case scenario, fill about 10% of the remaining void that we're going to have for budget, but I still think we need to consider that.
Additional questions, Commissioners? I think the legislation that we're presenting tonight, I do not believe requires us to be specific in how those dollars are going to be spent. I do think that Mr. Snyder makes a request that we are hearing for the first time, and I think it is, I think that it may be the will of this commission, that we take that letter under advisement and talk further regarding this issue. We are thankful for the 500-plus thousands of dollars, but there are two sides to every coin, and I certainly understand the safety issue. I understand there is downside to not, to closing a fire station and not providing coverage to many of our residents, and there certainly is a safety issue, and no one in this commission wants to put firefighters at risk. That, of course, has to be balanced against the pandemic that we face ourselves in and the budget crunch that we face ourselves in. So I would, I believe that passing this legislation or passing this resolution to accept these funds allows us to accept them and make a decision based on where they will best be used, in accordance with what they are, what they are meant to be used for. Does that accurately reflect the will of this commission, or does this commission want to go in another direction? Commissioner Poehl.
Mr. Chairman, yes, you are absolutely correct, the conversation, that's what needs to be done. I would suggest that this $500,000, it's our responsibility to decide what quality of service comes from each department. Yes, in general, 10,000 feet. Look down at this, all the departments are going to have to make changes. But the idea that we're giving out grants to buy whatever windows or flowers in people's yards and don't have money left over for firefighters, when we know we have a shortage that we do, is what I'm discussing. And the works, the work sessions that we were supposed to have is where we should have, could have discussed these things. It's about the priorities that this commission says to the community, this is what we're going to provide you and where we're going to cut. Right now, I just have gross numbers of how much money there is, and told we're short, not what you're spending it on. And quite frankly, as you said, you just knew, nobody even knew we were down to 10 firefighters per day, and I think we should. But yes, we should pass and accept this.
It's an issue that deserves continued debate, and I think we will debate the issue going forward. I'd ask staff to make a recommendation based on, based on a clear set of facts from both our, both our Finance Director and from our City Manager and from our Finance Director. Additional questions or concerns, Commissioners? Mr. Cresser, you poll the Commission on the motion.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Now on the, now on the resolution.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that resolution is passed. Mr. Cresser, you present item number two, formerly item number one.
Yes, item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of real property located at 2106 Parkview Boulevard and identified as parcel number 58-01860.000 for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Lasco, I presume you were out there somewhere. I want to compliment you on pulling another deal together on a duplex, but what I will notice is that, my recollection is the prices you're paying for these are starting to inch up. My recollection was we bought the last one, a fourplex, for around $10,000 a unit, and I see we're at about $12.5 for this one. Must be a, must be a palace.
Yes, Mr. President, I think it's a combination of prices slightly upticking, but I would also mention that as the unit count goes down, the price per unit normally goes up. So it's fairly typical that as density increases, prices per unit go down. So I believe this is our first duplex that we've purchased in the South Side Initiative, hence why it's probably pushing the limit of the price per unit this commission has approved thus far. It is adjacent to a large tract of land that the city already owns, so it's pretty integral from a future redevelopment standpoint, but you are correct in terms of the price per unit being on the high side, but I do think that's mainly attributable to the smaller unit count.
And, Mr. Lasco, you're absolutely correct, that I presume the dollars will go up. I hate to guess what that last parcel out there we're going to buy is going to cost us, but I hope you continue to be successful to seek these properties out. I only hope that, in my lifetime, we get to a point where we can do something with the land that we are clearing out there. Commissioners, questions? Questions for?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
Are we, we, Mr. Lasco, we've got to be closing on only 50% of the parcels out there, correct?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Waddington, from a pure acreage standpoint, we're probably getting close, maybe in the 40% range. I know last time we had a property, believe it or not, we've had a lot of acquisitions over the last, excuse me, year or two. There still remain about 40 properties, which could sound like an insurmountable number, but between us and the County Land Bank, we've done a tremendous job over the last year or two. So I do think we're getting to the 50% standpoint from a land acreage count, as Commissioner Waddington alludes to.
Thank you.
Additional questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, just a comment about properties and their value. For me, there's a ceiling on what the value is going to do on the going up, as simple as that. Those properties, if there's tenants in them, they can just keep those properties, unless you actually have a developer online that needs the property tomorrow, we don't have to buy any of these properties for a long, long time. So till Mr. Brady brought it up, I hadn't given thought, much thought, to the increase of 2,000, which, per unit, which isn't bad, but I'm not open to the go-ahead, for you can, the sky's the limit, like we actually need these. The only market for these is us. So how many there are left doesn't make a lot of difference to me. Just for future, when you come back asking for approval for more money than this, I'll probably not be in favor, unless you can come up with a reason to justify it. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? Mr. Cresser, you poll the Commission on the motion.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Mr. Cresser, item number three, please.
Yes, item three is a resolution approving and declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed city-owned fiber extension to the Amtrak station for transit operations project, and directing the City Manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Stuart, can you share with us what we're buying here? Doesn't look like it's any money out of pocket, but we're either buying or extending fiber to the Amtrak station.
Yep, certainly, through you, Commissioner President. This is a zero-dollar amount for us. There was a grant from the OTP2 that was available to improve communications for our transit. We applied for it, $67,000, and that will complete a fiber run from City Hall out to the transit station. It's the only location we have that's not connected by fiber, so they've always been a kind of technology island. So this will bring them into the fold and let us provide better services out there.
And my understanding is there is no match, there is no city match.
Correct.
So we're going to, we're going to get the whole amount.
Yeah, every single penny.
Great, that's a good deal.
Good.
Additional questions, Commissioners? Mr. Cresser, you poll the Commission on the motion.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, now on the resolution.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Mr. Cresser, item number four.
Item number four is an ordinance adopting amendment number one to ordinance number 20-058, passed by the City Commission on March 23, 2020, making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2020, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Chairman, we had questions from Sharon Johnson about the Mylander Funds and if there was any restrictions on any of them. I don't know who answers.
Mr. Cresser, I wonder if you, to refresh the question that Ms. Johnson asked, I wonder if you would reread that question now, and then that will give Ms. Reeder an opportunity to respond to that.
Yes, Mr. Murray, the question was about how they are being appropriated and how much the city is receiving each year in a donation from the fund, and what restrictions are placed on the donation.
Ms. Reeder, do you have, can you give us any insight on that?
Yes, through you, Commissioner President, to Ms. Johnson, the Mylander Funds, we budget about $100,000 a year. We get a donation based on how their investments perform for the year, so a benchmark is about $100,000 a year. These funds are, we are looking to budget some wages towards Mylander Funds and also some materials. These all have to be used for recreational purposes for the Park and Rec Department, so those are the guidelines that we get for the Mylander Funds.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Reeder. Commissioners, additional questions? Mr. Cresser, you poll the Commission on the motion, please.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Mr. Cresser, you present item number five.
Yes, item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute an agreement between the Auditor of State, City of Sandusky, Erie County, and Ray and Associates Incorporated for auditing services for the fiscal year 2020, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion. Once again, I think we have a question for Ms. Johnson regarding this, and if you would, if you would, Mr. Cresser, if you'd be so kind to read Ms. Johnson's question again, Ms. Reeder can perhaps respond to that.
Yes, Mr. President, the question was, why isn't the city bidding out of the audit contract? The same firm has been performing the service for 10 years. Through you, Commissioner President, to Ms. Johnson, the Auditor of State released that we can have a waiver for an additional year. This is due to the fact that coronavirus has hit, their staffing levels are low, the Auditor of State's office still has employees working from home, they would be in charge of performing the bidding process and taking this out to bid this year. We have had excellent reviews and working relationships with Ray and Associates, so we desired at this time to move forward and have that additional year with Ray and Associates for our 11th year. Then we will have to go back out for the bidding process according to the Auditor of State guidelines for the 2021 audit.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Reeder. Commissioners, questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
Just to speak to this, Mrs. Johnson, I don't have, since this is an anomaly, and we're going to go back to bidding them out in 2021, there's been no indication that they, this vendor is not going to do a good job, I think, for this one year, that I don't have a problem with the fact that we didn't, that we just took the advice of the state and did this, we took the out.
Additional questions, Commissioners? Mr. Cresser, you poll the Commission on the motion, please.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Mr. Cresser, you present item number five.
Yes, item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute an agreement between the Auditor of State, City of Sandusky, Erie County, and Ray and Associates Incorporated for auditing services for the fiscal year 2020, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion. Once again, I think we have a question for Ms. Johnson regarding this, and if you would, if you would, Mr. Cresser, if you'd be so kind to read Ms. Johnson's question again, Ms. Reeder can perhaps respond to that.
Yes, Mr. President, the question was, why isn't the city bidding out of the audit contract? The same firm has been performing the service for 10 years. Through you, Commissioner President, to Ms. Johnson, the Auditor of State released that we can have a waiver for an additional year. This is due to the fact that coronavirus has hit, their staffing levels are low, the Auditor of State's office still has employees working from home, they would be in charge of performing the bidding process and taking this out to bid this year. We have had excellent reviews and working relationships with Ray and Associates, so we desired at this time to move forward and have that additional year with Ray and Associates for our 11th year. Then we will have to go back out for the bidding process according to the Auditor of State guidelines for the 2021 audit.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Reeder. Commissioners, questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
Just to speak to this, Mrs. Johnson, I don't have, since this is an anomaly, and we're going to go back to bidding them out in 2021, there's been no indication that they, this vendor is not going to do a good job, I think, for this one year, that I don't have a problem with the fact that we didn't, that we just took the advice of the state and did this, we took the out.
Additional questions, Commissioners? Mr. Cresser, you poll the Commission on the motion, please.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved again with our thanks.
And then finally, Susan Schultz donated a sculpture she created for her home at 1423 Cedar Point Road titled "Sale." The Public Arts and Culture Commission has denied her request and recommended acceptance of the donation. Due to time constraints, the artwork will be stored until a location determined by the Public Arts and Culture Commission. Value for the artwork is unknown, but the cost to build was approximately $10,000. I'd ask for a motion to accept that generous donation.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to this person for donating that artwork.
And then administration, we'd like a motion for myself to enter into a contract with Cronos, Sosher Inc. of Branchburg, New York, for three years, a cloud-based human resources information system. We negotiated considerable reductions in the cost due to the end of the financial year, which is June 26, but need to be swift to realize these savings. The net increase to our current costs would be an additional $7,634 per annum, which will easily be reduced through internal efficiencies and reduce support and hardware costs. We intend to return with proper legislation once contractual language has been finalized, but I'd like a motion to direct me to enter into that contract.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you. Also, the city is in receipt of an economic development transfer, or TRACs, for paddle and climb. The permit is coming from Eris Family Restaurant located in North Olmsted. From their application to the state, paddle and climb estimates, estimates they will invest about $15,000, creating additional jobs at this facility and generating additional $15,000 in sales tax alone. It is requested the City Commission by motion provide authorization to sign off on the TRACs transfer from indicating the City of Sandusky endorsing and acknowledging this transfer for an economic development project which will benefit the community. The proposed TRACs transfer will come back to the City Commission one additional time in the near future by the Division of Liquor Control for one more stop when the city will indicate whether a hearing is requested prior to being authorized by the state. I'd ask for a motion to approve this TRACs.
So moved. Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to finance, just a reminder that the municipal income tax filing deadline has been extended until July 15, and that the city will no longer have an employee to assist with filing for income taxes since residents should contact Rita at 1-800-860-7482. Tax payments can continue to be made at customer accounting office at City Hall at 240 Columbus Avenue. Moving on to public works, ODOT has begun replacing curb and round 90 ABA curb ramps along State Route 6 between Tiffin and East Corporation Limit. They'll be working six days a week for the next few weeks to get as much of the concrete work completed as possible. Also, the Jackson Street Pier was officially open to vehicular traffic last Wednesday. Please be patient with the great lawn as we wait for it to thicken before allowing foot traffic. Forestry Service continues to move through the city to clean up trees fallen from the storm on June 10, and we anticipate covering every zone prior to the July 4 holiday. Residents with questions or concerns about damaged trees, please call 419-627-5829. Also, a special thank you to the City of Norwalk Department of Public Works for their generous contribution to our cleanup efforts. They dispatched two general service staff and provided a chipper and truck to aid with the emergency work in the aftermath of the storm. And finally, for public works, streets and traffic will begin to implement traffic changes on the Myland Road overpass and at the intersection of Cleveland Road and Cedar Point Drive in preparation for the opening of Cedar Point in a few weeks. And then finally, with the planning department, the city has released the application for the operation of their food pantry with CDVGCV funds. Applications are online and due Monday, June 29, by 3:00 p.m. The planning commission meeting is scheduled for June 24 at 4:30 p.m. Board of Zoning Appeals, July 16 at 4:30. Landmark Commission, June 23 at 4:30. Arts and Culture Commission at July 21 has been rescheduled, has been scheduled for 5:15 p.m. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I got one comment. I know one of the firefighters, Jeff Danovich, has been picking up cigarette butts on the Jackson Street Pier, and I did, so I, I think I collected like 54 between the little cigars and the cigarette butts. Could we possibly look at, maybe I can gather some people for donations for the cigarette butts, like the little recyclable things, drop them in instead of dropping them in the trash down there? Because I'm not going to tell somebody, you can smoke or not. I don't smoke, but we got to have some, or I don't want them getting in the water. We got enough stuff going in the water. So that's something to look at. He had sent something to me on Facebook and then private messenger, and then I copied back that I'd bring it up, so.
Additional questions for City Manager?
Through the Commission, through the Commission, President, we can absolutely take that under advisement and see if we can get receptacles out there on the pier.
Thank you.
Thanks. Additional questions for the City Manager, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Just two things. One, I just wanted to share the incredible number of positive responses I've received regarding the Jackson Street Pier. A number of folks have contacted me personally, say, you know, I was opposed to the changes, but it really came out great, and thanks for sticking with it. So that's just, it's, it's a testimonial to both, you know, inspiration and insight, but, you know, without, without the, without the planning that followed, and this is incredibly detailed planning at so many levels. I'll, I'll be looking at that pier for years to come to understand just all the little details in there and how things fit together. But we had the inspiration, we had the vision, but without the, without the planning, the vision is just delirium. And we had both. Then we had incredible execution. I mean, the, the folks at Donnelly who did that are just, they're craftsmen of the first order, and women of the first order, so I just want to pass that along. And I know we've all had a lot of conversations about fireworks in town. It is a real problem. I don't know what has suddenly caused the upsurge. I know we're close to the 4th of July, and that always causes an uptick. Some people think it's not enforced. A fellow who got a citation, I believe, last night understands that it is enforced, and I just want to make an appeal to the residents to contact the police department when someone's shooting off the fireworks next door or out in the street. The police need to catch this in action, and without that, without the help of the residents, we can't curb that. So I, it become, it remains a serious issue, and we have, of course, in the General Assembly, the annual 4th of July bills, and those are the bills that are designed to let loose the restrictions on fireworks. Very bad idea. These are real safety issues, and I, I hope that those do not pass, but that's an issue that we may have to wrestle with, with the General Assembly trying to expand the use of fireworks instead of contracting it, which we really need to do for the safety and for the, just for the quiet enjoyment of our citizens. So thank you. No particular questions.
Additional questions for the City Manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to ask Eric to pass on a thank you to the Rec Department for the Juneteenth event that was last Friday. It came together rather quickly, but it was, it was a great response. I want to thank Tondra Frisby for putting that together. Appreciate her efforts in that. Myself, as well as Commissioner Harris spoke during the evening time. I'm not sure if any other Commissioners spoke, spoke during the day. But it was, it was a nice and prompt event. We look forward to having something larger next year. But just to kind of talk about the Jackson Street Pier also, that evening while we were out there, there were so many people coming out, riding their bikes, walking, and didn't really know about the Juneteenth event, but, you know, we stopped and just seemed like it's all about. We provided some great information. That, that Jackson, and the events, and I look forward to have more of those out. It's just a great, great part of this city. There were several people from local communities, Norwalk, and I were out all evening, so yeah, just wanted to pass on.
I, I want to, I want to kind of pile on Commissioner Murray and Commissioner Twine's comments, certainly regarding the pier. I did a pretty good job of thanking our two contractors, but I did a very poor job of thanking our internal staff. And by that, I mean my own lay of hands to the engineering department. I, I find that they're so good at what they do that even I am taking them for granted. You cannot take an engineering department for granted when they are able to pull off such things as they did on both the pier and Sherline Drive. And along with that, our planning department certainly played a significant role, a lot of give and take, a lot of moving parts.